We're gonna call this meeting to order, our last Highgate Board Meeting at 6:43 PM. Uh, we'll start off with the agenda amendments, I don't have any. Anybody else have one? Hearing none, we'll move on to, uh, public comments regarding future budget, or future agendas. It's kinda pointless, I guess, uh, but any public comments? Do I have public today? Nope, okay, moving on to new business, we have nothing under it, so I guess we have no new business. Okay, boy, we're flying.
Yeah, we're doing why did we have dinner?
Right, uh, future meeting dates, today is the vote, uh, the polls close in sixteen minutes, so. I hope you both probably voted already, so we're good there. Uh, the next MVSD Board Meeting is June eighteenth at six thirty at MBU Library. Uh, there'll also be a, uh, local board celebration at the Abbey at six thirty on June nineteenth. For all of the, uh, sunsetting boards and go and commiserate over, uh, Act forty-six and it's sunsetting and all that, or our local board sunsetting. Uh, cassette agenda, I'm looking for, uh, a motion to adopt our May ninth meeting minutes.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Uh, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of adopting May ninth meeting minutes signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries four zero. Uh, business report, check warrants.
Looking on them.
So Laura, will there be anything that comes in after this for us to sign?
Yes, I think we have a recommended motion.
Yeah, we have two more agenda bullets down as we're gonna go over that part, yep.
No, excellent question.
I figured there would be.
Yep.
Do you have a check warrants for the month of May, I believe?
Yes, I do, um, the constipatable, I'm still signing them, then they go to Lisa. Constipatable total in fifty-five thousand, six thirty-eight ninety-eight. Payroll coming in at eight thousand, nine thirty-nine fifty-four. Other disbursements under payroll, two hundred ninety-four thousand, one eighty-one ninety-nine. Payroll deductions, sixty-three thousand, five oh one oh nine. For a total on this warrant, four hundred twenty-two thousand, two sixty-one sixty.
So I'll entertain a motion to accept, uh, month of May's check warrants.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of, uh, adopting, uh, May check warrants, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four zero. Financial report.
So you have the financial report in front of you that's actually through yesterday. I want to, I think, who was my expenses and revenues as I could through, for the, for this fiscal year. Uh, carryover is up significantly from last time, about a hundred, a little over a hundred thousand dollars at this time. Really, the only thing that's changed significantly since your last, um, report was, uh, the, we did not need to assess you anymore special ed assessment, um, at Central Office, and so. Due to reconciliation that was made for last year and the revenues that we've received so far, we didn't need to assess the schools anymore for that, um, other than for MBU. So, um, overall, I think it was like a forty thousand dollars, forty-six thousand dollars savings compared to what was budgeted in your assessment lines. The current year's special ed costs don't technically get, uh, reconciled until next fiscal year, but, um, for this year, we're okay. Um, other than that, just kind of an overall, um, review, your revenues are down almost about a hundred thousand dollars from what we budgeted. It's really, some of it is special ed costs are down, so therefore the intensive reimbursement is down. And, and most of it is because of transportation reimbursement is now netted out of your expenditure. So not a big change in revenues from what we had projected at the beginning of the year. Um, and really not, I feel like we did a pretty good job budgeting in Highgate, um, some shifts in paraprofessional costs from special ed to gen ed, which is very typical, but overall. Lines came in about where they, we thought they would, um, and so that's always good. Sure, I got all the highlights. And there was obviously a tech integration position that we didn't fill, provided some savings, um, offset with some increased support in the tech coordinator position. Um, but there's still the tech line, about eighty thousand dollar savings overall, and so that's helping towards the cause. That's really, really about it, I feel like we're finishing in good shape in Highgate, and, um, it's always a good feeling.
Well, I just have to say how, how pleased I am, you know, and I know how difficult a year it was to do this with all of the roof and unexpected expenditures where we were. A little worried earlier in the year about how tight it would be, and so I just can't say enough to administration for how they've managed. The budget through this really challenging year.
A lot of help.
Alright, well, on that note, you wanna, uh, I wanna ask for y'all's permission to, um, use a little bit of what we have left over to get a couple of the Makerspace. Bigger ticket items that, um, that just take some time to set up, so the earlier we order them, the earlier Christie and I over the summer can get them sort of ready to use. I'm talking really about two things, the three D printers and the, the little Ozabots, the little mini robots that, um, that would be used in the classrooms, um. And those are, those are a total of about thirty-seven hundred dollars, um, and I would obviously. See to you on what you think, if that's appropriate or not, um. The, the advantage you get in doing it now is timing, more time to get them up and ready to, to use and integrate into learning in August, so.
I have, before I answer that one, I do have one question about the carryover, and it seems out right now our budget's being voted on for next year. And if the budget goes down, um, is the carryover what we need to use to keep the lights on?
We haven't, I'm sorry to say that we have received very little guidance from the AOE as far as how that can be used, we're supposed to be getting some, and let last legislative report we have. It closed with, we're going to be reaching out to business offices, we just got some guidance within a week, so we're closing in on that week, and I'm hoping we do get some guidance. I'm not sure at this time, typically our carryover is the, it skips a year, and so then it offsets the taxes for the next year. So I'm, I'm, I'm thinking maybe, maybe that money will not take us very far, to be honest with you, and emerge thirty-seven million dollar budget, this.
Well, like I said, is that enough to keep the lights on, you know what I mean, we have to keep the buildings, you know, uh, somewhat sustained, we can't just abandon them.
I'm, I'm not certain at this time how that money would be moved over to MVSD, if we can just move it because we need it now, or if we have to close out that fiscal year, be audited, reconcile, and then. Apply those funds, that, I'm, I'm waiting for guidance on that.
So would we, with that being said, are we able to use the funds to, for the Makerspace? Does that have to be?
I, I think it's very appropriate, I don't consider it even a new sort of item, because you're already planning an investment for, for next year, this is just a little bit of a head start, thirty-seven hundred dollars. I think we'll put him in a position, you in a better place than.
Yep.
I don't think it's an appropriate use of that money, it's not, not a brand new item.
Anybody else got something? So these are printers, you say?
There's two three D printers, which are each nine hundred bucks, that's eighteen hundred, and then, um, the, the. They're called Ozabots, but what they essentially are is programmable, so teaches kids how to code robots, um, and those, the classroom set, it all comes as one set, is eighteen hundred dollars, that's thirty-six hundred. And then there's a hundred dollars worth handed in that math wrong, so it's actually four hundred dollars worth of the, the act, the filament that goes in the three D printer, so that actually is exactly four thousand even, um, so. Glad I caught that, um, but yeah, that's, that's the stuff for the three D printer, the filament that goes in it, is that last four hundred bucks.
So warranties with it, and?
Say it again?
There warranties with this?
Uh, for the printers, definitely, um, and yeah, for the Ozabots as well, um, that's the other school that we, that we kind of modeled this budget off of. Fairfax returned a bunch of Ozabots and got a, they were given the option of a refund, um, or just to order new robots, 'cause they had new ones come out, and they chose the, the latter, but. Um, yeah, all this, the only thing that wouldn't be, I wouldn't think they would have any sort of return ability on would be the filament, the four hundred dollars worth of stuff that goes into the printer. To make the items that kids design, but I can't imagine how that would be faulty, um, so yeah.
What about software to design the object that's going to be printed?
All online and free, which is lovely.
Okay.
Yeah.
And do the computers you have have the capability of running the online programs?
Yes, yep, Chromebooks, yes.
And so the, so they learn how to, uh, program robots, you say, or that? Is that how it works?
Program? Yeah, so the, the robots themselves are, um, basically if you learn the, uh, way to code anything, um, it's all the same sort of, uh. What's that called, computational logic, and so the robots are a, a way to like visualize that coming to life, 'cause you can't ask a kid to program a whole, you know, computer circuit board or anything like that, but. The robots take really simple commands and like do stuff that responds to those commands, so like even a kid just learning can get the robot to do something by programming just a little bit of code. And it's, it's really, really cool, gets kids excited about that, that line of learning that. Otherwise, it would be really hard to visualize a success, you know, it would just look like lines on a page otherwise.
Right.
They're, they're, I mean, I love this stuff, so maybe I'm not an objective observer of that, god, they're so fun, you get.
It's all zeros and ones.
Um, well, they, and that, that, that's the thing, is they, they make it so it's not just zeros and ones for the little kids, 'cause they, they can't, they have no idea of that stuff, um, so. It's, it's really fun and it's engaging, and, um, I have seen teachers not just teach it as coding though, and integrate it into, like, this one teacher had a grid. And they had like these multiplication facts, and if you laid it on a certain, you had to program it to go to the right answer, um, and it was a game, um, that, so kids tended, not only needed to know their multiplication facts, but then needed to be able to program the thing to go to the right answer for that multiplication fact. Which was really neat, um, the same thing with spelling sight words, um, so I've seen, I've seen multiple sort of ways to integrate this into regular learning as well. Although most teachers just do it as a, as a, a learning, a learning goal in and of itself, to learn how to code. Wish there's tons and tons of jobs with that stuff these days, so kids are learning earlier and earlier.
Yeah. Uh, Rich.
I'm sorry, you said that the other school returned a bunch of robots?
Yes, they were.
Was there a reason why, or was it they just didn't wanna use them, or?
Um, they, the.
I'm assuming it's a same bag.
They got a, they got a kit of them, and for whatever reason, a couple of them wouldn't connect, like the, I don't know this well enough, but like the Bluetooth or whatever, uh, wireless signal or whatever wasn't connecting. And so they just returned those, um.
And they just replaced them with the wrong?
Yeah, and, and on that note, like, there's a bunch of these different kinds of robots, and we, we did the, did the, I think, hopefully the smart thing of asking schools that have done this, like, which of these actually work? 'Cause, 'cause it's all about like, it's good that the idea is there, but if it doesn't connect to the, to the thing, and the, and the, you're getting that spinning pinwheel of death, kids lose interest, and so. The Ozabots, we, we're sort of universally told was, that was the one to use for, here starters.
Does, MBU has a Makerspace, and so did you guys go to MBU and see what they had in their Makerspace, so?
We went to.
Kids coming up in fifth, sixth, fourth, fifth, sixth, probably, will already have a foundation when they get to the MBU Makerspace?
Yeah, and, and the stuff that we will use here is not as advanced as the stuff they're using there, but it's the same skillset, yes, um, and I mean, the dream would be that, that, um, that schools that feed MBU start to talk a little bit more about that, that sort of maker curriculum.
That's why I'm asking, so they get a foothold in, you know, the beginning of it here, and when they get there, it's not totally foreign.
Right, right.
'Cause I think MBU has the little bits package too.
They do, uh, we, we were cautioned against those, and they break a lot, um, so like, I mean, not that.
No, they're fragile.
Who, who, anybody, but, um, yeah, and, and actually, that, that Shark Tank thing that everyone did today, uh, I've seen a school do that with access to Makerspace tools, and it's amazing what kids design, so, um, anyway. So yeah, that would be four thousand, now that I did the, the right math in my head.
Okay, so I'd entertain a motion to approve, uh, four thousand dollars for S- Makerspace equipment.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving four thousand out of our carryover, uh, for Makerspace equipment, uh, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries four zero.
Thank you all, appreciate that.
Uh, back to the financial report, uh, and entertain a motion to accept the financial report as reported.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Uh, hearing none, all those in favor of approving, uh, the financial report, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries four zero. Okay, auth, uh, the next bullet is authorizing the board chair or the financial committee to sign warrants or other documents relating to the closing of the district.
So just as Lisa brought up, um, there will be warrants again, so we'd like to authorize, um, the financial committee to come into Central Office and, and sign those. There may be documents such as closing out bank accounts that require a board chair signature, um, we just came from Sheldon, where they made a similar motion. Um, we, we'd like to have this board's authority for Chris or the finance committee to sign standard closing out business, uh, documents. Uh, obviously, if there is some kind of, uh, Supreme Court decision, or, or some kind of item that comes up that's unexpected, that would require a meeting, uh, we would make sure and call a meeting, but. I think much of it will be, oh, we need someone to come in and sign this piece of paper today, you know, um, that will just be pretty, well, run-of-the-mill for closing out a business.
Uh, so I'll entertain a motion for authorizing the board chair and the finance committee to sign warrants and other documents relating to the closing of the district.
It seems I don't mind either, I'll make that motion.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion?
Somebody on the financial committee can.
Is that an and/or, or is it a both?
I changed it to and, it was or written on there, but I changed it to and.
Yeah, 'cause it. Depends on, it's, you, typically, the finance committee would just sign the warrants.
Here comes Richard.
So, uh, all those in favor of authorizing the board chair and the finance committee to sign warrants or other documents relating to the closing?
So you want all three to sign?
If I say and, it's be all three?
That's how I read it, it would be the board chair and the finance committee.
Alright, so authorizing the board chair and/or finance committee to sign?
Can we pick, can, I, I just, I don't wanna have to hound you and try to get, I'd rather we be clear about who, who I should be contacting to get this.
Well, I think what Julie's saying is there's.
So should I contact the finance committee or Chris Shepherd?
I think what Julie's saying is there's some things that would require Chris's, Chris's signature over the finance committee, but that the finance committee also has things to close businesses down, so.
Let's break this into two motions.
Into two motions, maybe, just trying to make me clear.
I gotta resend my.
There you go, you, Dave and Lisa willing to resend their previous motion?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Send it.
Okay, so, new motion, uh. I'm looking for authorization for the board chair to sign any documents relating to closing of districts, we'll start with that one.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor of, uh, allowing or authorizing the board chair to sign any documents relating to closing of districts, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Abstentions?
Yep.
Motion carries four zero one. Okay, uh, second motion, authorizing the finance committee to sign any check warrants on anything related to finance, uh, for closing out our district.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
You're welcome.
Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Abstentions?
Yep.
Motion carries four zero one. Uh, oh, that's funny, we have new business on your choice.
I know, I noticed that. We were doing this by phone and things, so.
That's really new.
So, new business, Channel fifteen, subscription for board meetings.
Well, Steve wanted this on the agenda, you know that we were having trouble finding the link for Highgate on there, and I was finding it along the side, but the way that the Highgate Elementary site is, it's a Google site, so anytime something got posted, it would disappear. So it was actually, and then we weren't finding anything past February, so we called Channel fifteen, and they, um, fixed that, so we now have, um, March, April, and May's board meetings up here as well on the site. And I'm gonna go into the Highgate site, I'll go back to the main line, where people can find the link is at the top where it says school board, school board video. I don't know that it was there before, I think it was buried somewhere else, and I spoke with our tech director, and they worked through, um, how to make it a little more, um, accessible. And, um, actually, Pat and I talked about this, and, and, uh, Robert, our, uh, tech director, um, also talked about, you know, when we are, we're gonna have a new website for the school district, one of the first new websites we wanna do for the individual schools is, is Highgate. Because it's, because it's a, a Google site, it's, it's a little difficult for the community to navigate, um, but, uh, we, we did finally get all of those.
And I've been on there since I've talked to you, so.
I just wanted to be responsive to that, because I was at a conference saying, well, I know where this link is, as you were emailing me, and then the link was broken, and then I went in the next day and it had disappeared, I couldn't find it. So I think it was a little bit under construction at the time you were talking about it.
Yeah.
Um, but it is important, 'cause a lot of people actually do watch, you know, they don't come, but they will watch them on TV if, or on their computers, if it's easily found.
I take it as a refresher before the next meeting.
Good, I just wanted to make sure we.
Yep.
Okay, uh, on to old business, uh, first, the quick claim deed for the NATO property.
So, I have one, I did not make copies, and I'm happy to do it, we've, um, I have two quick claim deeds, the. Okay, that's just strange, um. And I'm not gonna have anybody sign anything tonight, 'cause the one I have in front of me is.
I think that's the one that I was mentioning, that's some strange.
It's, yeah, it has a, yeah, anyway, I have to work with the lawyer, we have a lot of quick claim deeds, so Franklin and Highgate both transferred property to their towns. Then, we have quick claim deeds for, uh, the transfer of property from the local town school district to the Mississauga Valley School District. Um, I'll talk about that one first, 'cause it's the most straightforward, we're, uh, it's, the, depending on, you know, the court case, um, the property will likely just transfer July one, there's no need to sign a deed. However, these deeds have language that codifies the fact that the town of Franklin, or the town of Swanton, or the town of Highgate gets first dibs, if you will, on the purchase of any of the school buildings. So if the white building ever went up for sale, for example, the town of Highgate would have first, uh, uh, first offer on it, right? Um, that's, I know that's in our Articles of Agreement, but people don't always remember Articles Agreement exists twenty years from now, but they would go to a town clerk's office to look for things. So, we're actually suggesting that boards authorize the board chair to sign that sometime before December thirtieth, when this board loses all authority, because you do have a litigation out there. There is a Supreme Court piece, so we, you know, that something could change, and you don't necessarily wanna do it until you feel comfortable. Um, and if you choose, if you don't do it, that's fine as well, um, it'll, but I just, that's, that's the straightforward one, and this one has a typo, I have to tell you, I had ten different quick claim deeds, and then there were. Town lawyers and our lawyer, and they were emailing me different, I was just knee-deep in them and reading through them, and I, I printed one that was a mistake, so, which. So we wouldn't be asking anyone to sign it for tonight, but it is very short, it literally just releases, uh, you've already signed the bill of sale, and it describes the parcel of the NATO property. And that it is transferring ownership, and this gets filed, you wouldn't be signing it tonight anyway, because you'd sign it at the town clerk's office, and it'd be notarized right there. And then there's small filing fees, that's about it.
So that would be the chair would be signing it?
Yes.
So we need authorization for the chair to be able to sign these deeds in the future?
I'll make that motion.
Just a minute, I'm clarifying, make sure I'm getting the right motion first.
Okay.
Right, that's what we're looking for.
Yes, and, you know, if you want to authorize the board chair to sign the quick claim deed, transferring property, you may want two motions, because one, you need to do before June thirty.
Right.
And the other.
The NATO property has to be done, right?
Right, and the other, you may want to wait, um, because it's really just a matter of filing the record, it's not actually going to transfer the property in of itself, um, but you may wanna wait until the court stuff is all settled.
Okay, so we'll start with, first, uh, we need a motion to authorize the board chair to sign the quick claim deed for the NATO property transfer, which would need to be that one. Richard?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the board chair to sign the quick claim deed for the NATO property transfer, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries five zero. Uh, second motion, to approve the board chair to sign the quick claim deed for the rest of the buildings and property transferred to the MVSD.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Uh, discussion? One thing I would say about it, I'd like to wait, pretty close to the last minute, to give the courts some time, and you said the sunset for that is the end of the year?
Yes.
December, right?
Yes.
That end of the.
Uh, end of the calendar year.
December thirtieth.
Calendar years. Yeah.
And we can make, we can make an open-ended motion, and that's good enough, right, we don't need to set a date or anything, okay. All those in favor of allowing the board chair to sign the quick claim deed at sometime before the end of the calendar year, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries five zero. Uh, executive session, I don't believe we need.
Yes, we do.
We do?
We do.
We have a reason for executive session where premature public knowledge would clearly place the board and other parties at potential disadvantage, and need a motion to go into executive?
I'll make that motion.
For, what are we going in for?
Personnel.
Personnel. Uh, Richard, second?
Yep.
Discussion? All those in favor of going into executive session for personnel, signify, alright, who are we inviting in?
Uh, Julie, Pat, and the five board members.
Okay, uh, all those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries five zero, we are going into executive at seven thirteen. Uh, we're back out of executive session at seven forty-six, uh, there's no action needed out of executive. Uh, due to my error, I skipped over the principal's report, it was in our agenda, so we're gonna go to that now.
So I'm just gonna give you a hard copy, just let you take a look at that, um, as a, as a souvenir of your last meeting, and, uh, but I would like to point out. And, uh, but I would like to point out that, um, two things, there's information on our, our days next week where the students are not in, but the teachers are, and in keeping with, um, I think what the Highgate Board has allowed us for the last three or four years to actually have teachers stay on uh, beyond kids, and rather than not make up the student days, but we get a lot of work out of the teachers, and this, uh, will be the same, so I appreciate that.
I'm gonna second that, so, so appreciated, um, incredibly, incredibly useful time for us.
Um, and just to add that, uh, you will recognize one new higher name as Autumn Bior.
Yep.
Um, a Highgate alum, alumni, alumnus?
Alumnus.
Uh, and, um, she is, um, went to school down in New Hampshire, and, um, was actually kind of late interview, uh, applying for this position, but we had, we'd gone through a lot of candidates, and whenever we hire local, um, it's a, a great opportunity, so Autumn was really excited, and um, she didn't clench when I told her it was for sixth grade, so, um, she's right, she's, she actually taught sixth grade, and it's her, um, student teaching experience all year long, so she's just, she's wrapping up a year with sixth graders, and, um, and has some good experience, so she will be a, a new sixth grade teacher, and hopefully, like Brandy Mascol, you know, somebody that, uh, is with us for a long time here at Highgate School.
And she'll have plenty of guidance.
She's got some good DNA for education, absolutely.
Very good. Any que, any questions on the principal's report?
And I would just, uh, just like to add, as, um, and I, I know I can speak for Chris, but, um, I have appreciated the incredible support that, um, the, the, the boards for over the last four years have provided me, and in fact, and then in turn, been able to provide that to teachers who then provide it to students, and the support has been unlike any other place I've ever been, so, uh, even though the composition's changed a little bit, not much, and the support has remained the same. Uh, you ask good questions, tough questions at times, but you're always there, ready to support any initiative that we think will enrich the lives of Highgate children, and now Mississauga Valley School District children, so thank you very much for all your support.
I want to echo that too, I mean, it's just been a tremendous year getting to know all of you, and working together, and bringing on people that, you know, had to have their arms twisted a little bit to come and come back to this board.
They did pretty good.
But it really has been. It's been terrific getting to know all of you and doing this work on this very straightforward school year, um, with no, no bumps along the road, nothing to be worked up.
And where were you?
But, uh, it, it's been tremendous, and, and, uh, Highgate Board has been a big part of that, and you've all made me feel very welcome this year, and I appreciate it.
Uh, I would also like to extend, uh, the great pleasure of being able to work, uh, on this board for the last forty years. Uh, I've been a chair for almost two, um, it's been great learning, I've learned a lot in the last forty years about schools that I and I, my mother's a teacher, so I kind of grew up around schools, I thought I knew a lot, I didn't know nothing. Um, and also great appreciation to the staff for throwing us a dinner tonight, that was greatly appreciated, and the students signed some cards for us, and it's the reason why we did it, you know, I mean, this is, it's for the kids, and it's been, uh, it's been an honor to work and serve with this school. I get to move on and serve multiple schools now, but, as does Steve.
Yeah. And you guys have done a great job too.
So, thank you very much, and, uh, sad to see this board go, it's been a, it's been a roller coaster. Onto the next one, I guess. So, with all that said, uh, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Last one, Richard.
I'll second it, Richard.
Fourteen years, it's time to make the last one.
And, uh, all those in favor of adjourned, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four zero, we are adjourned at seven fifty-one.
What was it, four zero?
Before everybody's heart stopped?